...call the meeting to order at 6:37. And we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Ellis, could you take attendance?
Mrs. Castle?
Here.
Mr. Herakawa?
I am here.
Mr. Lanacy?
Hello.
Mrs. Matt?
Here. Mr. Strang?
Perfect timing.
Perfect.
Okay. I believe we have the need for an executive session for the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, Jackie.
Okay, so we will return to open session at 7:15. We'll move on to 1.4, review of the agenda, additions to the agenda. You are going to have one change to the agenda for 3.1 through 3.13. It says, we're going to do that as consent agenda. We're actually going to do all those items individually. Any other changes, right?
No.
Okay. So we will move on to 1.5, approval of minutes for previous meetings. I'll be back at 1:00, May 18, 2017. I need somebody to make a motion.
A motion.
Take it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? 1.6, acceptance of financial reports. Looks like we have two. We have the Internal Plains Auditor's Report for May of 2017, and the Monthly Treasurer's Report with budget transfers. I need a motion.
Remove.
Any discussion? Questions? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Okay. 1.7, building use. Looks like we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. And we're going to take these all individually. Also, the first one being late stem. Would you like to talk about that?
Sure. This is a request that was put in. We've had an individual who's been fantastic coming in, Bill Strang, who's been working with our 4th grade classes to kind of integrate Minecraft, which is a very popular, I'd say video game, but I think it's more of a computer-based game, into the Common Core curriculum. So Bill, who's kind of working with, kind of developing summer programming, has requested the use of our building. Again, he's continuing the use of, working in our classrooms free of charge. He'll be doing that again next year in our 4th and 5th grade classrooms, which is awesome. But he's actually started his own company, or his own group, I should say, to kind of offer like a summer camp experience. So he's requested the use of the building, recognizing that he is a for-profit and obviously, you know, would incur charges, so.
Good.
He's using a lot of neighborhood schools as well. April Park, Lansingburg, he's got about four or five locations that he's using, or asking for use, I should say.
Can I have a motion?
A motion.
In a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Do a roll call.
Is that a roll call, or is that all in favor?
All in favor.
Yes, all in favor. It's an all in favor.
I abstain.
Yep.
Okay.
So I believe that was 4 ayes, 1 abstain, 0 no's. Next, we'll do St. Jude's. Looks like they are looking for their basketball. Yeah, the basketball used at the gym. They've used the gym for years. I don't know that we need much discussion on that.
All motion.
End of second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
1 abstain.
Our next one is April Park Youth Basketball. Have they come here before?
Yes, they are here every Monday.
Okay.
They take the early and late slots every year.
Can I have a motion for April Park Youth Basketball?
All motion.
All second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Next we'll talk about is Classy Lassie. They do the whole school year. I know that they've been coming here a long time also. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Any abstains?
1 abstain.
Okay. And the final one, East Green Bush Girls Basketball. I think similar to all the other basketball programs, want to use our gym for practice. Need a motion?
A motion.
In a second.
Take it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Moving on, communications to the board. We've had a couple this month. One was from NISBA. Said they were inviting us to something on June 27. The other was from a parent who had a concern about special ed, who we referred to Dr. Reardon. So that was all the communications we've had. We move it on to opportunity for the public. Has anybody signed up for the earlys?
Not for the early, no.
Okay. We'll have an opportunity later also. We move on to reports to the Board of Education. And first one is, it's like DS Arch.
Hi. How's everybody?
Good.
Good. Very well, very well.
Feeling better?
Kind of a two-pronged approach tonight.
Are you feeling better?
I'm feeling much better, thank you. Yeah, I had a little spasm, shoulder issue, ended in the hospital last week, but all is better now. It's amazing what a little cortisone can give for a day. So two-pronged approach tonight. We're going to talk a little bit about construction update. Brandon is here with me tonight, Brandon Carey, from our office. He's one of our Assistant Construction Supervisors. And we also have, some of you have met her, some of you have not, is Anell Jektoris. She's our onsite's, construction site superintendent. She couldn't be here tonight, but she's the one who's living out in the job trailer. Oh, I'm sorry, field office. For now, in perpetuity, for the duration of the project. Tom's had quite a bit of interaction with her, and we welcome interaction with our construction site personnel at any time if issues arise, or, you know, if you just want to go and say hi, that's totally cool, so. So as you can see, trailers are onsite, field offices are onsite. All of the major subcontractors have their field offices onsite, I think save one.
There's two that really don't have to mobilize for another month or two until...
So they won't bring their, they won't bring their field offices onsite for storage until they need to, because obviously they're paying for, usually paying for rental for that. So those will be showing up shortly. Just this week, there was a couple of connexes delivered out here for storage of equipment, material that had to move down the building. And also, they've started to do, you saw the construction fences go up with the privacy slats in them, and that went up at the end of the road, down to the lower section, and also on the opposite end of, just outside the playground boundary. So it's to protect that area over there. Still have full access and use of the playground in that zone, but we started to take down the fence in that zone, inside the construction area, so they can start prepping and doing grubbing and tree removal for the site in that zone. So you're going to start to see some of that area get really clear, and you're going to get a nice view from, from Whiteview Road down the bottom of the hill there. So what we will do on a regular basis, and coming probably from Brandon and/or Anell, will be bi-weekly construction updates. We'll basically be sending information to Tom to publish the report, based on, basically just what's coming up, what we can look forward to, what's, what the progress, what progress is happening onsite, and then, you know, what anticipating, what are the things we can anticipate happening onsite. We choose, we try to be as communicative as possible, so as not to, especially this time of the year when there's still students onsite, and we're making sure that construction traffic is not happening when students are moving in and out of the site. Most of that happens either earlier before the students get here, or it will happen after the students are already dismissed for the day, not allowed during the day. Sometimes there'll be some deliveries and things, but we try and keep that to a minimum. We also have, we, this week we had our first OACM meeting. Thanks to Kathy for showing up for that. That was really helpful, having, having a board representation there. Dr. Reardon was there. Hopefully we'll see Miss Yodas there. But it's our way to, again, stay in front of, in front of the board, also in front of the district, to make sure that you guys know what's coming up, what to look forward to, what types of things are going to be happening in the building. And we'll be bringing in district staff as necessary to, to be involved in different parts of the process as is required. So Neil may be part of some of those discussions and decisions, but he'll be brought in, and teams will be brought in as necessary. There's not a whole lot else going on right now. Obviously, once the school, once the students are out of the, out of the building, a lot more is going to start happening in rapid succession. So really now, it's an outside exercise, getting things ready for major construction at the back of the building, and then the students, as soon as the students are gone, we start ripping and tearing, and then getting ready to put things back together. Does anybody have any questions concerning his thoughts on construction? Kathy, I don't know if you have anything to add after the OACM meeting?
No, I mean, I was glad I was able to make it. It was good to see how things are going to start rolling and play it out, and looking at the, one of the suggestions that Ed made was that, and you're probably going to allude to this, is that some of the items on the, on our checklist, that if we know, even though it might say six months out, if we know now we're not going to include them, let's just take them off the list now, and one less thing we have to talk about down the road, one more thing they can plan ahead for. So, you know, learning stuff like that was, was helpful, and I think we can work with you guys to make it run smoothly.
Right, right. Thank you for bringing that up. I did want to mention that, so. You had the list in front of you, that's a really good segue. We only had about, I think it was five items that we needed to get, take immediate action on this evening. I apologize, I usually write this down, but...
Mm-hmm.
There it is. So the items on that list that you guys have, Sharon, distribute that, the new ones?
Um...
Oh.
Okay.
Those are the new ones. I think everybody should have a copy of the...
I put a number there.
Yep. I made some changes just from the one that was sent out a little bit, a couple of days ago. I just had a couple of updates.
Thanks, Ed.
You're welcome. Thank you, Sharon. In general, not a lot, there has been a lot of information change on there. We just, again, this is a working, breathing, living document that will be continuously updating with dates as we make decisions on things, so that you can use this as your checklist for things that are, either decisions have been made, and/or decisions that are coming up. I also included on the back, on the back page, a bit of a legend for what the colors mean, because frankly, I started forgetting what the colors meant. So hopefully that'll, that'll help guide the process a little bit, too. As far as decisions tonight, things in that kind of zero to three-month range, things that we need to make decisions on moving forward. We had 827, which is also in conjunction with P27, which was the upgrades to the main office toilet room. That was basically upgrading the finishes. We're still doing ventilation upgrades as part of the baseline project, so we need to make a decision whether to move forward with that or not. The storefront door 211 from the gym corridor that's here, that's the storefront door that's way down at the end of the hallway, outside the gymnasium. That door was actually recently, part of the reason why it's on this list is it was recently upgraded from a security aspect, I believe by the Sheriff's Department, was it? Or was it...
It's going to be. It's set for, yes.
Right, okay, so it's set for upgrade, so because they're kind of dealing with that door as part of a grant, I believe, it was part of a grant, it makes sense to take that off the list, because they're kind of handling what we would have been doing to that door anyways. Item number VE A4, which was the skylight tubes. We had some discussions about whether or not we actually wanted to include those or not, and in exchange for doing other things in the project, whether it be some painting in the gymnasium, or some other things, so those, that's the, those are whether to include those or remove those in conjunction of doing other things in the project. Item number M3 is the DDC control for rooms 246 through 250. This is basically Dr. Reardon's office, down to the business office. This was basically, as a result of the abatement, taking the abatement, part of the portions of the abatement are out of the project. The units are still controlled, they just don't, they don't show up on the direct digital control system, which is the DDC system. Because of the fact that we have to go in and abate that, it turns what would amount to, in any other circumstance, about a $10,000 project into a much, much more expensive abatement project. And then last on the list was the radiant flooring in the pre-K room. Again, was kind of a, I don't want to say luxury item from the get-go, but we have other ways that we can provide heat more efficiently and more cost-effectively than doing radiant in the floor. If it was, if it was a daycare center, or we had, you know, we had babies on the floor, that would be a different situation, but we're in a little bit different scenario right now. So those are the items that are of immediate decision-making, because they affect the path of construction as we move forward. And as Kathy alluded to, the other items on the list, which are listed in yellow on that, on that spreadsheet, those are items that a decision can be made at any time, and we would, you know, the sooner we make those decisions, the less we have the threat about it over future meetings. Not saying we have to take action tonight, but what I would encourage is for everybody kind of walk through those items. We've, those are the items that we've talked about previously, and that we can potentially make a more expeditious decision at a future meeting. And if you feel like making a decision tonight, that's fine, too, but again, it probably makes some sense to dig into it, you know, kind of re-engage with that list before we do that. But those, those five items are the ones that we wanted to talk about tonight. I'm sure there are questions. Happy to answer them.
Okay, so why don't we take them one at a time?
Sure.
That performance seemed to work well last night.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the sheet here, so I'm going to go down the list on this. The first item is A27 and P7 upgrade to the main office toilet room.
Correct.
Remove the door. So can you just talk about exactly what...
So in the, when we originally talked about the issues with that toilet room, the main issue is the ventilation requirement. The ventilation wasn't, wasn't ventilating properly. It's not connected to ventilation, and that's problematic, because it's right outside of the sheriff's office, and it gets used fairly frequently. So we had, we had, you know, essentially, that scope expanded to be renovating the bathroom in complete, adding an additional, quite frankly, an additional handicap bathroom that will be accessed off the corridor, as opposed to from the office. There's a large cost premium associated with that, above and beyond what the baseline scope was, is to essentially upgrade the ventilation system and deal with that, the root problem, as it were, as opposed to the expanded, expansion of that space. So that, that's, that was put on the VE list because of that.
Okay. So the number that's listed here, that's the complete renovation, or is that just upgrading the ventilation?
No, the upgrade of the ventilation happens no matter what.
Okay.
Right? So the numbers that are listed there are the numbers to remove the renovation scope.
Okay.
So the general construction scope, the plumbing scope, to take that out of there. We still have the mechanical scope included in the baseline project, which we're not taking, still gets properly ventilated.
Okay. So my opinion on this part of the project, while I would love to completely upgrade Mary's bathroom, I think right now, I think there's other pressing things that need to be done, and I think we should maybe just stick with the ventilation. Anybody else wants to jump in?
I think, I, I think it could be money well spent to get the entrance to a bathroom outside of the office, but it is a lot of money, so, I mean, to get it upgraded. So the ventilation will be upgraded outside of this, right? Without doing a complete renovation?
Correct.
The ventilation will still be...
Taken care of. Yeah, it basically gets a, it gets a new fan that's connected, right now, the fan's not connected to the outside of the building. It's not ventilating the space properly at all, plus it's not moving enough air. So essentially, it's a higher, it's a higher-powered fan on the roof, not just in the ceiling, that will ventilate that space properly. It's a total requirement, frankly, and it has to be that way. So that's part of the reason why we're not, we're not taking that portion of it all, because it's not currently ventilated properly.
I just think it's awkward that there's like a private bathroom, basically, where it would be more useful if the entrance was from the hallway and not from within the office.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Neil had said before that the toilet was not, like, the plumbing, it was not supposed to be used, what it's being used right now, as a constant, so...
That it's overused?
Yeah, but that the material, the toilet or the plumbing, was old and needed to be, that's what I thought you were looking at, whether the ventilation, the size, the door, I mean, I thought that originally, he was saying that this toilet is old, it should not be used. It's used every five minute, every five minutes.
I mean, it flushes.
I, yeah, right, but I, the system, I don't know. I thought it was being upgraded.
It wasn't anything that we, that we picked up on during our building condition survey that would be like, oh, this toilet doesn't work, or it's not...
So you've looked into that, and it's not the plumbing issue?
No, no. It's a ventilated space.
No, I mean, for my two cents, really, it's not, I mean, we could put a door up like there was a door before, and not allow so much of a traffic flow, that's not...
I mean, that's an administrative thing that can also help the situation.
I think we could divert people. Please don't think that it's really not an issue for me, and I don't know what the price is. I thought the toilet had to be replaced.
I...
I thought that's what Neil had said originally. So thinking, if you're going to put in new toilet plumbing, and you could cinder block up the door, because I'd rather have no one go through my office to go, that's all I thought, throw a couple cinder blocks up, because I'm not looking to use the bathroom, like, just close it up, it's just the traffic in and out.
To say that this is, this is not a bathroom any longer?
But there was a door there, I could, we could easily put the door back up and say, no faculty allowed in this way. Is there a need for another, that bathroom? Or do people just get used to going? So I guess, I feel like everybody's looking at me like I'm asking for this, I'm not...
No, certainly.
I don't know what the money is, I don't think it's worth doing.
Certainly it's an inconvenience.
If it's just for the freshness of the smell, I can handle that, or whatever's happening. You know what I mean?
Well, the fact of the matter is, the ventilation requirements, the ventilation requirements for a bathroom space like that bathroom space are not being met, they're not code compliant right now. If you say, listen, we're not going to use this as a bathroom anymore, you can shut the door, lock it up, and say, this isn't a bathroom anymore, and...
A door was removed.
The door...
Going in that little entrance, right?
Yeah, in the little vestibule.
We could put it back up and say, staff, use the other bathrooms, but that's just something to consider.
I mean, you see this a lot in this vintage building, where the principals basically had their own private bathroom, and that's, that's what those facilities were typically used for. And it was not a, you know, general purpose, general use, everybody uses it, toilet facility. If that, if it wants to go back to that, then that's, that's an easy solution. If it stays to be used as a toilet, it does need to have the ventilation upgraded, I mean, as far as from a code compliance standpoint. I mean, we're kind of past the point of, of, you know, being able to pull that back unless you're, literally, unless we lock the door and say, we're not going to use it as a toilet anymore. And that's really more of a functional administrative thing.
Ed, because of the way it's configured now, there's probably not an easy solution of just putting a door off the hallway and blocking off the door that's in the inner office, right? Because you, if you open the door, you'd be walking into the toilet, I think.
Well, right, the way that it's configured right now, and you live it every day, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a door that goes into the toilet, that's, that's a separate door. There was a door, kind of from the main office area, between that door and Mrs. Yodas's door.
Right.
So that, that door was taken off, off of the hinges, and there's no door there any longer. If that door was put back, that ultimately makes that, that toilet room a private toilet room, which is what the original intention was for that space. So that, that's an option, to say, this is not a general-purpose, staff-use toilet room anymore.
Can we, let's just ventilate it, Ed.
Put up a door?
No door. Let's ventilate it, and we'll worry about whether we do a door.
I mean, it really boils, then it boils down to administrative decisions.
We have the door.
That's right. It has nothing to do with the project if we put up a door.
The door, the door is in store.
That's up to you guys.
I'm pretty sure the door's around somewhere.
We have the door.
Okay.
They still have the door, so if they want it back up, they can put it back up, scratch it. Everybody's in agreement? Scratch the project here, ventilation onward.
Done. Good.
Next on the list, VE A2, storefront door from the gym corridor to the exit.
Right.
That's the one we're going to have a grant money for?
Yep.
Okay.
That door is fine.
Gone.
Okay. Everybody's in agreement on that one?
Yep.
That was easy? Okay.
Next on the list, VE A4, five skylight tubes into the music room, the new music room, and the pre-K, pre-K classrooms.
Important to note that each of those spaces, the skylight tubes is an extra way to bring natural light into the classroom in areas that, it sometimes can be a little bit further away from an exterior window, but important to note that each of those spaces that we're talking about now do have natural ventilation, and they have, or they have, they have windows that are operable. So this is really just extra natural light into those spaces to supplant the, the use of the lighting in that space, the general-purpose electrical lighting, which is all LED and high efficiency anyways, but, but those windows, those spaces all do have windows.
Even the music classroom, there's windows?
Yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, the music classroom has a window that actually looks out to the, towards the playground. It's on the other side of the stair tower. Yeah, we're required to have, either, well, we either have to ventilate the space and usually provide air conditioning, or we can, we provide windows. And we'd rather provide windows, frankly, because it's much better aesthetic overall. It's a little bit tricky in the music classroom, because a lot of times you want that space to be sort of, sort of dark, or being able to be controlled acoustically and also visually, so that window is, is large, but it also has shades on it, and it's able to be closed off. But also very important to have natural light in those spaces.
Is that window open for emergencies, or is it just one of those solid...
It can, yeah. Yeah, it's designed to be openable, so that, you know, if a fire truck had to pull up there, and the ladder had to get out, yeah, you can, it functions as a secondary means of egress. That's actually a third means of egress, because there's two doors out of that space giving it sides into different smoke zones.
I would say, no. I don't, as long as there's natural light coming in, I don't see the need for...
I feel like we talked about this already.
We did.
Okay.
The pre-K classrooms also have, they actually have, they face south, and they overlook the, kind of the valley there, too, so the views from that space are pretty awesome. I wish still, man, if we couldn't get this done a little sooner.
And to Darcy's point about, we already talked, and there were some things we already talked about, but apparently, we didn't give like a final decision.
Oh, final decision, okay.
So we can talk about a couple of the other things later.
Yeah, if you, like, just as, for instance, the items in the yellow are the items that we originally had conversations about, that we did not formally take action on.
Okay.
So like, the item number 88, as an, as an example, was the gymnasium locker replacement. We talked about that. and we talked about that, those lockers are in, basically, they're in really good shape, and frankly, it would be financially irresponsible to spend the money to replace them. So those items on that list were either low-hanging fruit, they just need to have formal action.
Let's get through this list and then we'll.
Exactly, yep.
Okay, so the next one, VEM1, the radiant, pre-K radiant heated floors. If we can give heat in another capacity.
Yeah.
At a better value, I think we should probably go that way. Radiant floor is nice, because you can take your shoes off and all that, but.
Well, actually, it's funny, in pre-K, you don't want the kids to take their shoes off, because in the event of emergency, they don't need to be able, they don't need to have to try and put their shoes on.
Right, right.
You need to keep your shoes on, even in that, yeah. Learn that the hard way.
My opinion is, take that off the list, though. Anybody opposed?
I don't think it's needed.
Agreed.
It's not like it's the only heat source in the room, there's gonna be other people, so.
Yeah, the, we have, not to belabor the point, but we have to provide ventilation for the space. Radiant floor is great, because it can heat, but it doesn't, so we have to provide ventilation anyways. What we basically would be doing is supplanting the natural, the mechanical ventilation with the heat source. So we're kind of essentially making that system a little bit less multifaceted. It's just all gonna be happening in the same unit.
Okay. Now, the other items you have on the list.
Well, sorry, because wasn't there, wasn't there also the DDC for tonight, but it didn't make it onto this sheet?
Yes, I think you're right.
Because there's only four that we just voted on.
You're right, yeah, well, that's kind of a hard one to, I mean, yeah, I can explain it, but it's basically, it's the direct digital control capability for the four units of, in the classrooms along the front of the building, on the entry side of the building, including Dr. Reardon's office and going down that hallway to the business office. The reason why that was not included during the last Capitol project was because the space below that, to be able to access that, to get the controls on that, is all hazardous material. It's all basically in an abatement zone. Because we made a decision to not go forward with the larger portion of that abatement, in order to be able to access the controls work for that portion of the building, would involve the abatement work. So it's not to say that those units are just running wild and they're not controllable, they're certainly in control, it's just that you can't sit in a room on a computer screen to control it, it's an issue, they have to, you have to go to the source to be able to tweak it. So it's still controllable, still, you know, on the, you know, on the system, as it were, it's just not accessible by the computer.
The price you see on the sheet is, one-fifth is actually the DDC work, the other four-fifths is the abatement work.
Did we already vote on that, or no?
No, we talked about the session.
I think we voted on the, not doing.
We voted on the abatement, right, and that, this was kind of a separate component of that, but it kind of, essentially what it does is it puts the abatement back on the table.
I guess I kind of thought when we took the abatement out, we took everything out there.
Okay, and that's, that was one of the.
It's good to clarify that.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I left it on there, because I wanted to make sure we were all aware of the certification.
Yep.
Okay.
Now, the other potential items that we can talk about tonight, A12, the wood doors into the library mirror.
Those ones.
I believe these ones. They seem to be functional, lock, no problems. I think we can.
I think.
Take that off the list.
We can take that off the list. S1, I think we can kick off the list with Mr. Al, I know we talked about that, because stormwater management, I think, it disrupted the land and it.
Yep, so there's a couple that fall under that, the, you know, the tennis court, basketball court, it was the same scenario. We get, we exceed, well, not only do we do stormwater management, we exceed the allowable disturb, the site disturbance within the project, so we end up having to be deeper in the other, the other components of that, the state environment quality regulations. Because of the site disturbance would exceed a certain value, we would have to probably do underground structures, which is very, very, very expensive.
Yeah, so I, I believe we talked about it, just not in public, but taking S1 and S8 right up there.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other one you have on here, VE83, basketball backstop motors. I know we talked about this a little bit, so the end that's going to have the stage will have the newer motors, it's the other three that we're talking about.
Exactly, it would be the other, the other end of the gymnasium. Right now, those have the motor operators that require a drill motor to basically raise and lower the backstops. The ones down at the stage, the stage end of the space, because of the fact that that's a stage and it's going to be used on regular basis, those have a remote control, you hit the button, the motor's pulled it out. So we retrofitting those three, it's a matter of not retrofitting those other three. They can still be retrofitted in the future, if it's, we said now, we gotta, this is too much of a hassle, or we don't want to go that route. It's just, this is during this project, we're gonna save that, those dollars, we were gonna do the three that were imperative, basically, and not the other three.
Just a quick question is, have you heard or got any feedback on safety on that? Because I have seen them do that, they're up on the ladder, and they're pretty stretched out, pretty high getting that.
It's, I mean, the feedback is, it's not the safest.
Yeah.
That's informal feedback, but yeah, watching it is sometimes scary.
We can let one thing go through, right?
If it is a safety issue, the dollar figure's not so high where I think it's gonna start precluding us from doing other things.
I think you're right. Now, that being said, there's kind of two components to the safety issue, not to belabor the point, but one of the things that we looked at initially right out of the gates was whether or not the actual backstop equipment was in safe working condition, and we worked with a consultant to confirm that, yes, in fact, those, they have the safe stops, straps, basically, that if the backstop failed, or the motor failed, or whatever, the things aren't just gonna drop out of the sky, and if they're properly, they're all properly connected to the structural steel, the backstops are. So that evaluation's been done, it's just a matter of, you gotta get up on a ladder with a drill motor and a raise and lower.
So we're not killing everything.
So that.
We're gonna add that in.
Keep that on the list.
See, we can say yes to.
Something got through.
It's a little one, we can say yes to the little ones.
Let's just look over this chart quick, just to see if there's anything else. I see the gym lockers, that's something that we're gonna have to decide through, but.
I think we should move on to some of the preceptors.
That's the only one. Yeah, I just see the gym lockers, I think if we can get a quick decision on that. I've had a, I don't know if everybody has, but I've walked through that recently. They do seem to be in pretty good order, like you said. It might almost be a waste of money to replace something.
We can make it pain.
Well, no, they're actually, they don't need to do that. I mean, they're, the nice thing, well, the nice thing, the thing with locker rooms, in a K8 facility or K5 facilities, they just don't get the type of abuse that you see. And locker rooms, not to say that the lockers downstairs don't kill, but in a K8 facility, they just don't get to use what you do in a high school facility, and team sports, and so on and so forth, even intramural and after-hours activities, people aren't typically trying to rip the doors off the lockers, which in high school, that happens every day. You can't build a bomb-proof enough locker for a high school, but in the lower grades, it's usually not as much of an issue.
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of taking that off the list. I don't know if anybody's opposed to that.
No, take it off.
And I guess, moving forward, if there, you know, the other yellow and/or orange items on that list, you know, I'm happy to come, I'll probably fly, we'll be at the next board meeting, if there are items that you want to, you want to think about, we'll come and blow through that list. We'll send a, what I will do is I will send in our next kind of pre-cursor to the board meeting, these are the items that we potentially want to take action on, so you guys can digest that a little bit ahead of time, we can move quickly through it.
Great.
And also, if you guys talk amongst yourselves, like, every two weeks with our OACM meetings, if there's some issue, you know, bring it up, you know, something pick off, something you want to.
Yeah, it's another forum for us to have some of those discussions in advance, the OACM meeting, to have some of those discussions in advance relative to these items, that's a forum to do that as well.
Okay.
I think that's it, does anybody have any other questions for?
Did we want to discuss M5 and M5A, that clarification that was made at the meeting?
Oh, yes. Actually, that's a great point, because Ed and I communicated probably just before you guys arrived, was, we just needed some clarification, because I think we were kind of murky on how we left off with, I think we agreed upon not doing the full ventilation.
Correct.
Any sort of rooftop units, but I don't know if it was clear if we left off to, were we going with the solution of maybe modifying the current ventilation system, or nothing at all? So I think Ed ejected his minutes.
I did, and my notes from the meeting indicated that we would go with the upgraded solution, the rooftop, new rooftop solution went away. My notes were that we were gonna go with the upgraded, the existing equipment solution, to help the problem, and not do nothing.
Right, that was my understanding.
That was mine, okay, just to confirm.
So I, and I was a little murky, and that's why.
We were at the meeting the other day.
What was the decision?
To go with the upgrade.
The upgrade, the 4D, okay.
This is exactly what we discussed on.
Yeah, okay.
Perfect, and I wasn't sure where it left off, but I think by the minutes, it sounds like we did agree to go with the solution modifying the current.
That's what I thought too, but then that's not what Ed had, so I wanted to be sure.
Yeah, I was, I was a little murky on that as well.
I was too.
Now we're, now we're.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to 2.1B, eighth grade, Washington DC trip presentation. See a couple eighth graders in the crowd? I don't know if you wanna.
Sure, if I may introduce, actually, we have Anthony Lanacy and Julie Zakarka with us from our eighth grade trip, and also our eighth grade advisors, Mrs. Butcher and Mrs. Ratchek, who are sitting in the back right in the corner. As you know, we took our annual trip to Washington DC, April 5th through 7th this year, and what we liked, we started this tradition last year, was, we take the trip, we kind of build up, as you know, there's a lot of community fundraising, it's a really amazing thing that we're able to take 31 eighth graders away for two to three days, you know, in a six-hour bus trip to actually make this happen, and see so many things in such a short period of time. But then it's always nice to kind of look at the trip afterwards. So we made that goal, it was a great trip, but as much as we reported out on that at subsequent board meetings, we actually never really had a chance to showcase kind of what was happening. So Anthony had, so Gracie agreed to make a slide presentation, slideshow, and Julie kind of agreed to also join us and kind of talk about her experiences with the trip, favorite parts, things you noticed. So I'm gonna turn over to you guys, and also to our advisors, to pipe in at any point with their input on the trip and what they thought. And again, I had the privilege of going with them as well, along with Mrs. Sepp, it was a fantastic trip, but you'll see it through the eyes of our students. So Anthony, I'll turn it over to you, do you need to log in, or? And Julie, we'll have you stand up as well, if you don't mind, thank you. Advisors, did I miss anything in terms of, it was April 5th through 7th, it seems like forever ago, but I was.
Yeah, I don't remember the date.
Sounds right.
So Julie, what we'll kind of ask, if you don't mind, is as we go through, and Anthony, we've not had the privilege of seeing the slideshow yet, so it's exciting, it's like a new movie. But Julie, at any point too, during the slideshow, you want to pipe in something you remember from that, that picture?
Okay.
Good deal.
Day one. What is that? Remember?
No, not really.
Never really has.
Oh, I remember this one. So this one was really cool, it was the Kennedy's Memorial and it was something.
This is so awesome.
I like this one, the girl like tapped his feet and walked back and forth.
This is all our first day, we drove through the morning and.
It was hot that day. Oh, this one was the space one.
It was the space show.
Yeah. Oh, I like seeing that, because they said whatever, like, you walked around it, it looked like you saw the flag standing up.
An optical illusion, when you drove around it, it actually looked like it was beautiful.
Oh, this was funny, because all the kids saw Secret Service people on the dock, and they started saying stuff.
Like what?
Like jumping to the fence.
Those eighth graders, those would be ninth graders, but. Absolutely.
This was so pretty, we walked around it, and it was like the sun setting itself, we had the waterfall.
That's the Vietnam Memorial, right there.
This was my favorite, and we went at night and we saw it all lit up, and it was so cool, because we got to see the reflection pool looking down.
Think about, that was all day one, by the way, that's a long day.
That's a long day.
What'd you guys think of the museum, out of curiosity?
It was pretty cool.
Yeah, I like seeing some of the things, like the crimes that they had in there.
You could spend all day in the museum.
You could.
Over there, what, two hours?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And came out to pouring rain.
Oh, yeah.
Right, for the entire day.
It's like, this is where we had to run in the rain. It was pouring rain, and all of us were soaking wet when we got inside. And then we looked at that.
The last few years there's been construction, we haven't been able to see the dome, so you guys got lucky, it's been always moved this time, so you got to see everything.
I liked witnessing this one, seeing the giant space show, and like the racket and stuff on there. I liked seeing this, because I thought it was so cool how they did it. And we went on our bridge, and we got to take a picture of that.
Well, normally we'd go to that, but because everybody was dripping wet and cold.
Some people were.
We just took a picture.
It was the first stop of day three, right, Mount Vernon?
Yeah, it was cold.
Now, Anthony, were these all from your camera?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Inside out at the museum. Most of them got to go to the. It's just open.
Oh, this was my favorite museum.
They have parts where music would play, kind of hung out there for a while.
Oh, yeah, the keyboards too, they have like a giant keyboard, and the music set and you got to.
You go through this museum, you can hear a pin drop.
This is such a pressing one.
This is, you can hear a pin drop, it's just a, and it's filled with kids, but it's just such a, I can't explain it, it just hits you.
Do you guys remember getting the cards when you went into, remember they gave you, like the?
Oh, yeah, and then we had to figure out who we got. This one I liked seeing, we all went in at night, it was really cool, just.
Oh, I was, I didn't know if you took my camera. Must've fallen asleep on the bus. Again, just to underscore, besides the fundraising feat it is to send, for all of us to take the trip, if you think about it, that's a lot to do in three days, with 31 students, four chaperones.
And you, it is non-stop, we are, you just go, and it's, one thing is just as amazing as the.
And we were, and we were having Fitbit wars going on, we were walking further.
I was not in that challenge.
I think only Mrs. Butcher was in that challenge, when I think about it, you won, Mrs. Butcher.
That was our point, I'm chill, we really got back to the one, one treadmill, so she could beat me. That was at the museum.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It amazes me how much you guys see, I mean, you get, you hit the ground running from day one.
Yeah.
And it's non-stop.
Yes.
I can't even imagine. Some happy campers in that one.
That you were saturated, no, they just did it.
I was gonna say, that's one thing about your class that was very, not once did you ever ask, when are we going to eat, when are we going back to, you know, ever.
Were they afraid to?
They might have been afraid to.
There we are, woo! Who knew I could jump so high?
Especially after all that walking.
I know.
Very nice job.
Nicely done.
Nicely narrated too, excellent slideshow and nicely narrated. So if I may ask, on the spot, Anthony, best part of the trip was?
The Aaron's Base Museum.
Julie's best part of the trip was?
Oh, well, um, yeah, the Lincoln Memorial.
Oh, well, um, yeah, the Lincoln Memorial, probably the African-American museum.
Nice. Thank you.
I liked the Korean memorial. At night, the Korean memorial is an unbelievable sight. It's a wall, it's a, you just pop out at you. It's wow, it's really something to see. My favorite.
Mount Vernon.
I thought you were gonna say the place where we went to and it was pouring rain and we had it all crammed into a small seat.
Oh, the, oh, archives.
That was not fun.
It was a little tight.
So what were the least favorite parts? Were there any?
I forgot.
The archives.
The weather, because we were jammed in a little corridor, you know, for a very long time. I would really say there's nothing I, I, I just, it's just, it's amazing that we get to see all that. We get to do all that. And truly, you, when you go back to the hotel.
You crash.
Oh, yeah.
Very nice.
That's very nice.
What was your favorite part?
I was gonna say, I love the museum. I mean, really, you could spend days on one floor, just a lot of pop culture pieces, very, very fun. Thank you for asking.
Very nice.
And thank you for joining us.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Nicely done.
I can tell you, as Anthony's father, he worked on that probably 15 hours. And it resulted in five minutes of...
Eight minutes?
Excuse me, eight minutes.
He took good pictures. I didn't realize...
Beautiful.
And thank you for coming, coming out on a Thursday night.
Now they gotta go home and study. Social studies. That's what Bridget said. She's so done.
Okay, I think we will move along. Thank you again. Nice job. 2.2, District Superintendent Program Report. Dr. Ridden?
Sure, just to give a few little updates and I might, we'll turn some of the local pieces over to Dr. Yodis. The past couple of weeks have been marked predominantly by looking at our next year. So as you can imagine, in a school year, you start to wrap up the current school year, but you really start doing a lot of planning for the 2017-18 school year. So once the budget passes, we kind of continue with the next components. We've been very busy, as you might have seen through social media and through some letters home. We actually are doing some roster changes. We've been very exciting, actually kind of using, taking advantage of the many talents of our staff and kind of using them in some different components, which has been a very exciting piece of trying some new things. Going along with that, of course, we started to look at the scheduling for next year. Our goal being, like every year, is to get the schedule done as soon as possible. So of course, if there's to make any modifications, but to make sure it meets student needs. So Dr. Yodis and I have been working very closely to look at the K-5 schedule and also starting to do student choice in middle school to make sure that we can still offer the same electives and offer those options to everyone. Along with that, of course, with the construction piece, you know, it's been a big part, is actually starting the project. That was our final pre-K meeting of the year, which actually was great because we kind of concluded the meeting with ideas for next year, which is basically look at our next steps. We had a great guest speaker from a community service provider or community-based organization that provides pre-K services to the district. So we'll be entertaining some site visits next year. And then we got, of course, you know, some more nuts and bolts of what a pre-K program will look like now that the building is going to be coming to fruition. And besides that, of course, planning for the next couple of days, which of course will be very marked by Field Day, our graft and trip for the middle school, and of course, our culminating ceremony for our eighth graders and Moving Up Day, or I'm sorry, the graduation on Thursday night. There's been a lot of great field trips between fifth grade that Dr. Yodis will speak of, going to Statue of Liberty, Bronx Zoo for sixth grade, Tupper Lake for seventh grade, lots of great opportunities that have been happening. So again, it's a great way to end the year, but also in planning ahead for the next school year.
Thank you. With that, we'll turn it over to Dr. Yodis for the Principal Report.
We are getting down to the wire and we're having a lot of fun, but we're working hard. So I think we have a nice balance of a lot of hard work and, you know, playing hard as well. So lots of field trips, but also we've had an enormous amount of testing, which is all good and exciting to look at where kids are at this point. So every student in the building has just completed, with the help of Stephanie Carbone again, who does an amazing job running our whole building through, which is just really amazing to think of. All 360-plus kids are assessed in reading and math and NWEA, really looking at the growth. So no matter where you started, how did you end up the year? Did you hit your projected target for each individual student? So that's exciting. So it's a lot of testing, F and P testing, the reading test. Data team will start bringing folks through tomorrow and Monday, just meeting through with teachers, rotating. So we talk about every single student in this building. Where did they start? Where did they end? Was there anything we could do differently? Where, you know, where are they? Did they make those growth, no matter where they are? So for me, it's exciting. I love talking about every student and just really making sure that they had the best year possible. And if they didn't, you know, what are we gonna do already? Because we want to start in September with a list with those kids targeted, with their needs being met. State tests, you know, was a lot of, a lot of testing. And, you know, the good news is we're getting 75% of those questions back with, you know, an itemized list of how our students did, so we'll be able to work on that, compiling that information when they're released and over the summer to start again looking at, you know, every child and where every child could close the gaps a little bit, no matter where they are, high, medium, low. And so, you know, a lot of testing, working hard, but we're gonna use that data and we're really excited about it. Foreign aid has their science test, earth science, algebra. All of that stuff has been going on, earth science today, algebra last week. So the region's testing and, so I feel like if we're not testing, we're on a field trip, but we're trying to, trying to kind of, you know, they're working hard and then, you know, there's a little bit of fun. Fun Field Days coming up Tuesday, so hopefully that's another great celebration for us. Just to piggyback off what Dr. Reardon said, you know, with a lot of teachers and a lot of changes and really making sure that everybody is comfortable going into a new grade level and not panicking over the summer, that we really try to support the staff who are making changes. So in the midst of what we're not testing, we're doing the field trip. We've been pulling teachers out and providing a lot of professional development, really thinking of how you're gonna keep going and close out this year, but yet what, you know, what does next year look like? We've had staff developers come from Questar to talk about social studies, the new standards, getting teachers new materials that are aligned to the new social studies standards, K-8. In science, we're doing the same thing. Jane King has been over here looking at and training teachers. All of our teachers went through training on the new science standards and looking at the new materials that will incorporate a lot of hands-on inquiry-based learning, incorporating a lot of technology. So that's exciting. So that's going on. Tomorrow, we have a day full of math, professional development for those teachers going to a new grade level so that they're comfortable with their math curriculum up and running. So again, I think we're doing two hats and I don't know. This is where our check is. Get a 10, you have to finish out six, but get ready for the... So teachers are working extremely hard to, you know, finish the year strong, but then certainly be able to open the door in September 1 and be able to, you know, have a solid curriculum and materials. So a lot of PDs happening within the last couple of weeks, which is great. The staff appreciation, the PTA gave us a wonderful, so thank you to all the parents and everybody that sent treats and that was wonderful this week. Statue of Liberty field trip, I went on Statue of Liberty trip. It was wonderful. It was 95 and hot, but we managed to get through. It's hilarious you were with us. We had, you know, it was a great experience for the kids to explore Ellis Island and Statue of Liberty. Sage Literacy Clinic, we're wrapping that up Tuesday's last day. So we provided 20 hours of free tutoring to 40 students, K-6, from our friends at Sage. So that was exciting as well. Field Day next Tuesday, tomorrow kindergarten graduation, which is a big celebration. So we look forward to that and then certainly our graduation. I think that's pretty much it for coming up.
Thank you. Been busy.
Yes.
No downtime.
Not at all.
And the kids are off the wall like that.
Yeah, so you gotta balance.
Thank you. I don't see anybody from PTO here for a PTO update. I don't know if anybody has that name. No, okay. So we will skip that. We will move on to 3.0, Appointments and Organizations. 3.1, Approved CSE/CPSE Recommendations As Per Attached. Need a motion?
Move.
Motion.
Any second?
Any motion? I'll second, whichever.
Okay. Any discussion? Questions? No?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Herrichauer? Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack? Mr. Strang?
Yes.
3.2, Approved Summer School Bus Drivers July 3 through August 15, 2017. We have four, Ralph Roberts, Thomas Schmidt, Robert Cushing, and Lance Maxson. Need a motion?
Motion. Say it again.
Don't fight over.
So for some discussion, these are four bus drivers we currently have. They're just gonna sign up for summer school?
Exactly. These are current full-time drivers, or I should say, full-year drivers that are driving summer runs for students that are in placements.
Oh, okay.
Summer school placements.
Yep, good. Any other questions?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Herrichauer?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
3.3, Stephanie Carbone as a part-time .4 FTE, plus a maximum of five compensated summer days as instructional data support teacher for the 2017-18 school year as per the WTA contract.
Motion.
In a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? Want to talk about it?
Oh, just to kind of clarify, that was, as you know, that was a restructure position that we did over the summer last year when we eliminated a full-time person. Stephanie absorbed a massive amount of components out and has been fantastic in his role. So we are just adding a bit of summer days just to make sure that we can kind of wrap those pieces up. But again, that's from the elimination of a 1.0.
The FTE is the same though, is it?
Absolutely.
That's not changing.
Ms. Carbone, we remain in her 1.0 FTE role. Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Herrichauer? Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
3.4, Approved The Following Extracurricular Appointments For The 2017-18 School Year As Per The WTA Contract. We have Kim Herzlebest as CSE/CPSE Chair, Matthew Lutz as Technology Coordinator, Andrew Newmark as Reading Coordinator, and Dan DeSoto as Athletic Coordinator. Need a motion?
Motion.
In a second? Discussion? I believe you interviewed all these positions where you posted for all these positions and where you had multiple people apply, you interviewed.
Absolutely, yes.
Any other questions?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Herrichauer? Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
3.5, Appoint Linda Fikura-Bunk as Part-Time .8 FTE, Library Media Specialist, beginning August 30, 2017 through June 30, 2018, at Step 11 Pro-Rated. Need a motion? In a second? Any discussion?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Herrichauer? Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack? Mr. Strang?
Yes.
3.6, Appoint Keith Bateman as Part-Time .67 FTE, Physical Ed/Health Teacher, beginning August 30, 2017 through June 30, 2018, at a Step 2 Pro-Rated. Need a motion?
Move.
In a second? Discussion?
Sure, if I just may point out, Mr. Bateman is in the audience with us, right here in the wonderful black suit. Mr. Bateman surfaced as our top candidate. We did interview over, well, over 25 people applied. The committee did interview through a series of two rounds. And Mr. Bateman comes with some experience in multiple school districts and also is health and PE certified. So we're very happy to have Mr. Bateman join us.
We've been voted yet.
Quick on his feet, see?
Any questions or discussions?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Herrichauer?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Glad you're here, Mr. Bateman. Thank you for coming too.
I don't think you need the suit for Jim.
You can.
3.7, Approved Sarah Lam for Permanent Teachers' Aid Position at $13.31 per hour effective June 16, 2017. Need a motion?
Motion.
In a second?
I'll second.
And some discussion? I think we've, she already works here. Is this just making her permanent?
Yes, after she's done her six-month probationary period. So it just makes that permanent.
Okay. Any other questions? Discussion?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Herrichauer?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
3.8, Approved For The 2017-2018 School Year, July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. Dr. Mary Yodis, Principal of The Gardner-Dickinson School. And she'll be compensated with an annual salary of $100,043. This represents a 2.5 increase from her 2016-17 salary of $97,129. The district reserves the right to renegotiate for future raises and subsequent conditions of Mrs. Yodis's current contract on file upon the completion of the 2017-18 school year. Need a motion?
Motion.
In a second? Discussion? Questions?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Herrichauer?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
3.9, Resolved That The Board Of Education Reapoints Dr. Thomas Reardon As Superintendent Of Schools For A Five-Year Term Commencing July 1, 2017 And Ending June 30, 2022, Pursuant To The Terms Of The Attached Employment Contract Negotiated By The President Of The Board And Approved By The School Attorney. And The President Of The Board Is Authorized And Directed To Execute An Agreement In Substantially The Same Form As The Attached Employment Contract. Need a motion?
A motion.
In a second?
Finally got one.
Just to clarify what this is, quite a few months back, we came to terms with Dr. Reardon on extending his contract through 2022. This is just finalizing that, so. If anybody has any questions, you want to say anything?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Herrichauer?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
3.10, Approved Tricia Gibbs, School Nurse, For A Maximum Of Three Summer Days For The Transfer Of Health Records From Paper To Electronic Format As Per The WTA Contract. Need a motion?
Motion.
You can take it.
In a second? Any questions?
This does not sound like a fun job.
No, it is very rote and basically Trish, this is a great bargain for us because it will allow us to go paperless in nurses' offices in terms of immunization records. It would actually allow us to use Power School, the health capacity that we haven't used yet, so.
In three days is gonna do that?
She believes it can be done in three days, so. That's three days of...
Three days of uninterrupted, not handing out ice packs every 15 minutes.
Might be nice that, you know, I'm definitely not going to interrupt her those three days that we're gonna...
Probably what she's doing in the summer.
Mrs. Castle? Mr. Herrichauer?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
3.11, Accept The Memorandum Of Agreement Between The Wine and Skill UFSD And The CSEA Local 1000 Wine and Skill UFSD Unit Number 8271-00. Need a motion?
Motion.
In a second?
Sure, as you can see from the attached agreement, this is a very positive negotiating relationship that occurred between myself and representatives of the CSEA unit. And that's our teacher aid unit, basically, that represents those members that work in our classrooms. This is a very, again, very positive relationship, maintaining that. It is, also, you'll notice there are givebacks on their end, but also we're reflecting the work that they do that is very, really invaluable to the district.
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Herrichauer?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
3.12, Approval Of The Disposal Of 722 Titles From The Gardner-Dickinson Library Collection, Effective June 1, 2017. Need a motion?
Move.
In a second?
Second.
I do have a question. I'm sure these are all pretty tattered-up old books.
Actually, great question. They are, and also the word disposal basically just means that we're allowing the district to release them from the collections. They actually are being given to students to take home for free. Basically, Dr. Yodas, you've had... They're all gone now, right?
You put a book out there, we're going, we did it at lunch. And so if she clears them, we put them out at lunch. Yeah. Part of our big push is to hope that every child goes home with 10 to 15 books by their last day of school that we've got donated, or the library books, the excess, and just try to really pump up the summer reading. Over the summer. So, yeah.
That's great, that we're just not throwing away.
And then, and these are books that truly should be out of circulation in terms of they have had their better days, but they're great in student hands. Rather than being discarded.
Great. Any other questions?
And Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Herrickawa?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy? Yes. Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
3.13, approve the establishment of the Extracurricular Activity Club Fund for the Gardner-Dickinson Athletic Booster Club. Need a motion?
Motion.
In a second?
We didn't hear you down there, Kevin.
He'll second.
Discussion?
Didn't we do this already? We didn't already establish for the athletic club?
Oh.
I think we talked about it.
Talked about it.
But I don't think we officially established it.
Do we currently have a booster club? This is to establish the booster club.
What this would allow us... What this would allow us to do is basically, right now, as you know, in bigger schools, there'd be a softball booster club, a soccer booster club. Because of our size, we've had various parents fundraise through like the stickers that you've seen. So they're kinda collecting money, funds to use towards the athletic fund, but there's no real outlet to place it. So in essence, they're raising money at times, but it's almost like, well, does it go right back into the general fund? It doesn't necessarily go into athletics versus this allows the freedom of, similar to Drama Club, if Mr. DeSoto as Athletic Director decides we need softballs, or something immediately, he can use that, those funds towards that. Rather than it going into the athletic fund line that we use typically for payment of referees, payment of, you know, official fees, things like that. So it's kinda basically on lines of Drama Club of using revenue to buy things that fit the purpose.
So the Athletic Director, though, has the power to be able to say where that is dispersed to?
Yes.
Okay.
And basically, it allows then families that are perhaps affiliated with one particular sport to say, well, I'm not willing to start a, run the booster club, but for the soccer season, I would love to do concessions. It's not a matter of, the money's accounted for. You know, this was raised for during fall concessions. It's now deposited into an account rather than, you know, what happens to that money? Or where does it go? So this allows it to kinda be directed from athletics to athletics without going to the district.
And the treasurer manages that money?
Yes.
It's not like an appearance.
Oh, exactly. Denise manages it as like an extracurricular fund.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Herrickawa? Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
3.14, first readings. Policy number 5152, admission of non-resident students. Just a first reading, we can't really vote on that. But we'll probably be voting on that in July, unless we want to make some substantial changes. Otherwise, we'll probably prove it through July.
Oh, yeah, just as you know, the policy committee, in terms of the 5,000 series, has kinda been put on hold just until the summer when we can kinda recalibrate calendars. But this particular policy speaks to admission of non-resident students, basically in terms of, in particular, non-resident students and also employees. This is one particular paragraph that was mentioned about employees in the district and basically, you know, that benefit, if you will, in quotes, of sending their children to Gardner-Dickinson. So there's been, as you can see, there's some markup of the policy committee's comments, so if you're having a hard time following them, do let us know. But that's basically a reflection of the committee looking at justice policy in isolation, making comments and suggestions, and this is kind of the final product of their suggestions, by all means. Anything that you'd like clarified, please?
We need to have a discussion on this tonight, correct?
It would probably be in your best interest to discuss tonight, at least, to see if there's anything, any changes you'd wanna make, anything you would like moved forward, any pieces like that. But this does reflect, and Miss DeSoto, if I'm wrong, basically, you'll see the bold is advice from NISBA. So that's basically just like the NISBA attorney kinda speaking to you. The policy in itself is actually pretty short. It's pretty minor. But then, of course, you can see the pieces that have been eliminated, and then some of the comments that are put as well.
I believe the last paragraph is the one that's been added plus to, for staff.
Yes. This policy, as updated by NISBA, was pretty much, for the most part, the same. It touched a little bit on homeless students and pieces like that, but the piece that was added, that some districts have, that was added at the request of the committee and the Board to examine, look into, was the idea of non-resident students, but particularly employees in the district. So this is language that was taken from NISBA of seeing other schools that have the same piece.
So I think, I think we need to decide how much we wanna charge our employees to...
Right. I think that would be the one key thing that we have to talk about. Not charge anything, charge a small percentage, charge... I mean, I think it's definitely in our best interest to allow staff to bring their, bring their kids here. I mean, obviously, under the caveat of any of it does, space permitted, but that's generally not an issue. But I think just... Fee, no fee. How big a fee?
The piece that reflects also the committee, and that was well said, because remember, this policy committee consists of community members as well. We did add, it was just like the understood caveat that this is a K-8 experience, just to know that last paragraph, because our K-8 district does basically state that at the end of eighth grade... They figured it out. It's not as if they were a resident where they get the opportunity of high school, so...
What did you find that, I think, I know you sent it to us, but I don't have it with me. What did you find that other districts do that alone?
Thank you. I was gonna eyeball that one. Kinda looking, basically doing a quick examination of the quest to our area of what, do districts have a policy that allows staff to send their children and be, or to, do they charge? April Park, it was free. Housick Falls, free. It was, April Park was in their contract. Housick Falls, it was free, but it was a board policy. Ichabod Crane, doesn't have anything on file. Kuzak-Yathen's free. It's a board policy. Hudson City, free. New Lebanon, free. Contract-based. Skodak, free, negotiating contract. Shroy City, free, part of their contract. Takana Hills, free, board policy. And Lansingburg went with half tuition. And that's part of their contract, negotiated items.
I was thinking that I would like to see it free, but we also do have to think about the taxpayers, so I wouldn't be opposed to a nominal fee, maybe 5% of the standard non-tuition rate. I don't know if anybody else has a real strong feelings one way or the other.
I would say free, just because I know some may have economic, this may help in economic pressure, they have other economic pressures within their household, but this could help.
I would say free.
Do you know what our current rate is?
About $11,000. I'm sorry, $9,000 for K-5, and then $11,000 for 6-8. And that's a state set rate, basically, the state that changes each year. And the state provides you with last year's, the current year, basically, the overall cost of the district for a student.
And then, but on those students being here, we get additional state aid?
Correct.
So we would, we would, we get additional money for that?
Even if we didn't charge the parent, they could still get aid from the state for having them as students here.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Even if the parents don't actually pay for them to come here?
Right.
We would still get additional monies, just through aid, through the state, as opposed to...
So we'd get that. And then I think we get the plus of the parent being able to not be torn between where their children are and being here for events, for snow days, for, you know... I just see a lot of positives in, and I know some people in districts that do it, and they love the fact that they can bring their kids to school with them, you know? So I think it's a win-win.
Yeah. Like I said, I'm not a...
And I like it being board policy rather than negotiated in the contract, because then, if at any time, we need, you know, the board, the school needs to change the policy, it's a lot easier to do that than to have it negotiated.
Plus to point out, as all the districts have in common that had this policy, it always remained at discretion of the district meeting. So, for example, a very large class, while it might be unfortunate for a particular member, if we had a very large class and that was going to cause us to have to add staffing to that classroom, it gives the district the right to say, it's just not, we can't do that. And again, while it might be a sore piece, it does give us that right. And also, it's noticed, it's a K, it's written as a K-8 document, not a pre-K piece. So again, let's keep the pre-K at this point separate, because that's obviously something we need to be determined, but it's a K-8 experience.
And not high school.
And not high school.
What did you think, Keith?
Yeah, I think, you know, it's a great place to live and work. I'm sure we can allow our teachers to do that, for the reasons that Kathy said in particular. Having our teachers not have to worry about where they gotta run home for particular reasons seems like a good idea. And affordable is part of that. I think free.
So with that all being said, I think we can strike some of the wording out of here.
I have a question. Since we're changing it, does it have to come back as a first reading? Or can it come back as a second?
It says major changes.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Since you're just changing a percentage, I think you can count it as a minor change.
If you change a sentence, I think it has to come back. If we're just changing a number, like eight to zero, I think it's...
So just for clarification, we're gonna change that 8% to 0%.
Or what I might recommend, if that was what the direction you'd like to go as a board is, you know, at no cost.
And then strike the rest of the cents.
That was, you know, maybe enroll the district for grades, kindergarten through eighth grade at no cost. And then the rest of it, and then upon completion of eighth grade, the employee's responsible for the high school education of their child. That'd be it?
Yeah.
We can't vote on it tonight, though. Well, it's really only like two weeks away.
Stay tuned for that. 4.0, informational. Our next meeting, as we were just saying, will be right around the corner. Our organizational meeting and our general business meeting, July 6, 2017, at 7:00 PM. We're having our annual Board of Education Retreat, August 4, 2017, at 9:00 AM. I believe that's at...
That will be at, the first part will be at Britton Kill. We'll be combining with the Britton Kill Board for a retreat. And in the afternoon, if the Board is still acceptable, that will be returning back to Gardner-Dickinson. There'll be a morning session with Britton Kill and the afternoon with us.
Good.
All are open to attend.
And 4.3, opportunity for the public to be heard, Part 2. Anybody signed up?
Mr. Dunny?
I'm turning it on, and he's out. First, congrats to Dr. Yodas and Dr. Riordan for returning. I came in, my child came into the district as, with the start of both of them, so it was a pleasure having that versus from what I understand was previous issues. So, been a positive experience. The minutes for the bid awards references, because I obviously can't come to every board meeting, but the references, see attached for the board, for the bid summaries and whatnot. It's not on the website. I don't know if it should be or not, but...
It should be, so...
And just coming off a small project compared to the school district project, but you won't find a better group of guys, which, obviously, they've done previous projects with CS Arch. It's great to see them working on, for the district, doing what they're doing. So they did our firehouse across town, and there's no, no greater, like, behind you. Of course, CS Arch has been, was working for us for 20 years on that project. That's their running joke, is, you're still working on that? Literally 20 years. The only other thing is, which I've mentioned before, I have the, I get the East Greenbush flyer. The 11 of us in Detroit District didn't get our budget flyer, or our informational flyers again.
Sorry.
Okay.
No, I mean, that's, because we did, tried to fix that last year.
And the flip of that is, is that there's people in the, I mean, I get East Greenbush for whatever reason, but, you know, just like people in the April Park School District that live in town, and the Wyandotte get ours, so I get it. And then there's the additional houses going up in Kimberly, so there'll be a few more over the year goes on, so...
So, you know, we might wanna just get the list of those 11, make sure that we get them in the mailbox or...
You know, most times, it's, you know, it's a rubber stamp as far as like budget and things like that, but, you know, if things come up, it might get, you know, more important.
No, please.
That's it.
No. We apologize, but definitely...
You deserve to get our mailing.
I know. I get, this morning, they're honking, I'm like...
Bring over the last seven years.
Be helped sign at the end of this.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Carl?
Yes. You know, I am, I guess. Carl's spelled with a K. Names are important. I just went through a list of names. Couple of quick questions. Actually, more than a couple. The agenda. 3.8, 3.9, I guess. I noticed that with the principal, they have a price in there, salary, 10%. But not for the superintendent?
The superintendent's salary's not going up.
Why not? It's open to the public.
No, I'm saying his salary, it's not going up. It's not changing. It's the same as this year.
I mean, the only guy who found it, be happy he didn't get a raise.
We negotiated, we tried, but...
Love you too, Carol.
Next year, he's bringing me, and he goes down. Oh, one quick question. 3.1, approval of the 722. Will those titles be available, and would I be able to Google them and find them someplace, or were they on CDs here?
Which one, Carl?
312.
The books.
Oh, the names, the titles? Yeah, we can give you a copy of this, listen to it.
I'm just wondering if they would be readily available on... Oh, thank you.
Wow.
Nicely done. Was that your only copy?
I have to speak up on non-residents. Okay? I like to think, and I'm positive that everybody here thinks that we have an excellent school. Some of these teachers that live in other school districts may have wanted to get a job here because of what we have here. Okay? Now, I think they should have to pay. Minimum fee, you know, maybe $4,000, $5,000 a year. It's not gonna hurt, like we're talking 11. It's a little stifling because the benefits they have of teaching here. Okay? Now, we gotta go to the longer ones. I come up a while back, and some of you may remember, and obviously, it didn't happen. And I'm a big, big disappointer when it comes to it. Why in the world, when we're spending six figures in a teacher in the music department, we can't have a band or a representation in Memorial Day Parade in North Greenbush? To me, that's a black mark on the school. You know, I've heard some of the people tell me, I even heard it over the town meeting. Well, someone would wanna take it, we go off, and they wanna take it. Well, guess what, folks? You gotta give up some. But anyway, that's that one.
Well, with that, I do wanna remind you.
Yeah.
It's fifth graders through eighth graders, so...
Okay. Who cares? It's eighth graders only.
Well, when it's eighth graders only, I think that's three kids.
Because they drop out.
But there's a representation there. Maybe, but there's a representation there. This is the next biggest organization to the town, in the town.
Yes. I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but for us to get all the equipment that would be required for a marching band, I, I don't, I don't know if it would be...
What equipment are you talking about?
Well, they would...
The instruments they use?
Some kind of something to hold their...
Who owns the instruments? The people, the parents, or the, the school?
What does the kids do, or they're renting them?
They rent it.
Yeah, they rent them.
The parents.
They rent them by a month or a week or whatever. It's not an extra rental for the day of the parade.
But they can't see the music.
There's the equipment to hold their music, you know, for, for drums.
Well, I'm not asking them to have a piano.
I, I understand that, but...
In almost any wind instrument.
I, I understand what you're saying, but, Mrs., do you know how...
We don't always agree on things, that's the democratic way.
Yeah.
I just think it's a black mark on this district. And I, I've talked to a lot of people, a lot even seniors, that have no connection to the school, maybe they never did have, but anyway, we should be there. You know, because another thing it gives you is, everybody in this room, where's your pride in the school? You know, and, and another way I look at it is, these kids that are getting their music lessons, it's tutoring. Why do I have to pay for tutoring when I can't see them?
Come to the concerts.
Come to the concerts.
They, they perform at least twice a year.
Well, why can't I see them on the open with all the rest of the people?
Because that's not where they're playing.
I can come to the concerts, I do it with my grandkids, you know, but I'll tell you something else.
Have you ever thought, I have to ask you, Carl, have you thought about the amount of money that it would cost us to do that for, and I love the North Greenbush Parade, I'm a, it goes right by my house, I'm right out there, even in the rain this year, I was out there, for a 10-minute parade? I mean, it's a huge expense, and whether we'd even have the number of kids that would be interested in doing that, due to the, the time commitment...
They tried this year.
And everything else, it's, it's a lot for, for that one purpose.
I think we priced the equipment thing, was like for some of the leers, it was about $10,000. Just something for, you know, uniforms, things like that, so just something...
You know, we sound like they don't think, we have concerts, we have great concerts to come and see.
And maybe, maybe you put a, whatever they call them, thing that went up.
Duct tape?
Sash. I'm talking about a sash.
A sash. You know, I could, it's been a while since I've been in. Also, next, another, we talked about this bathroom with the door.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Now, my question is, is there a requirement for the school district to have a bathroom for LGBT kids?
I do not believe that we have one.
Tech bathrooms?
I didn't ask if we had one. I said, is there a requirement?
From state edge, you mean?
Yes. Because you know how that good thing goes through the state? They don't, you don't have to have any, but there's still a requirement. My idea is, if we don't have any, you make that, so there's a door to the hallway, sign on the door, doesn't cost a lot of money, and you conform.
Well, it does cost a lot of money. That's why we decided not to do that.
Want to put up a door?
To go through the brick wall to put up a new door.
There are other private bathrooms in the, in the school. There are other private bathrooms that...
And they can just walk around.
Anyway, they got, they set up, that's fine.
They can just walk around as well, if we have that issue.
Yeah, well, that, I've, just before. Okay. Tonight, started at 6:30. Did you have a pledge?
We did, yes.
I would request that the pledge be done prior to the meeting to the public, not prior to the scheduled meeting, executive session. Now, why, I asked a question a while back. Little Red tuition. This year, are we charging the maximum to Little Red? Does anybody know?
I believe we are not charging the maximum, but what we do in exchange is we provide them with bus transportation.
We have a contract with them for buses.
Correct.
Why? We have a con, I'll tell you what happened years ago. We didn't provide them with bus transportation, we told them to go elsewhere. You know how long that lasted? They would pay anything, one year. You could check it if you want. One year. That's a bogus deal. For what they're paying, and I'll tell you what I got told the other night over to Tommy, nice little old lady over there, I was discussing the possibility, and here's something you got to think about. There's two projects being planned in Little Red. One's for 250-some, and the other one's for 64.
Yep.
Now, that's 300 roughly, without being a math major.
Yep.
But anyway, what, 10% of those are going to have a kid?
We definitely have talked about that. I've asked Dr. Reardon specifically if he's talked to their superintendent to see if they've had any input with those projects or any projections for kids.
Well, you can get all the input you want. It's, the fact is, when it, when's it going to happen? If we're not charging a max, have you ever talked to some of these people over there that say, ha, 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 my, my house has worked so much more than yours is because my school taxes are X number of dollars less? You know?
But they also...
They don't care. All they want is below.
They don't have to choose us. They don't have to choose our school.
They don't have to choose our school.
They have the choice of going to April Park, so...
I know that. And I've said this before, and I'll say it again. I don't care if they, none of their kids come here. I'm more interested in educating the kids in our district than I am in educating the kids in their district. You know how much it costs to educate in this, a kid in this building? Anybody ever figured it out roughly? In this building I'm talking about, over $20,000-some. We charge them $4,000, $5,000? Why should I have to absorb $15,000 from one of their kids? I wouldn't ca, I wouldn't care. They didn't have any come here. We'd be ahead of the game.
No, we wouldn't. That's where you're wrong, because we would lose all our state aid for all the kids.
That doesn't make up $15,000, I'll bet your dollar to the die.
Yes, it does.
Are those numbers correct, Dr. Reardon?
Well, K-5 is $9,000, and 6-8 is $11,000.
Okay, why give me my dollar?
For one child. One child, not for all of them.
I understand. Let me tell you, let me tell you what this woman told me the other night. She says...
We're not changing.
Well, don't say never. Why not? She says, oh, you shouldn't say anything. You didn't know 58% of our budget goes to your school district? I said, yeah, 58% a lot, next to nothing, but...
Do you know that we get discounts from April Park, and we negotiate at the high school level to get cheaper tuition rates?
See, that's where, that's where you're doing the correct thing.
So...
We should negotiate with them. That doesn't mean we have to negotiate with somebody else paying the other way. That's a money lost deal.
Well, just, just to kind of clarify, is that our three-year agreement is up at the end of next year, so we'll be renegotiating with Little Red at that point?
Yeah.
We sign, you know, so that, that's dissolved.
No, because I, I see it coming down the road. But anyway, I can remember when they had K-12, then all of a sudden, they had K-1. I think, four years ago, they had K-123, but nevertheless. But anyway, I also have a suggestion. This is directed at our superintendent. Based on the fact that Little Red, and you can, anybody can check this, as the only school district left in New York State of its type, I think something should be done about upping the tuition with state approval. Because they're going to do it and do it, connect change. Woman says to me, oh, yeah, 58%. Oh, yeah, 58% a lot. Okay, that's... Yeah. Oh, yeah, one quick, throw one quick, see how... How many people in here remember English way back when? When you used to do diagrams and sentences? Do we still do it? There's a principal.
No, it's how far the curriculum goes.
Seventh and eighth grade.
Grammar, yeah.
Okay. Just a question.
Yeah.
But thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Carl.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Hi, Mary.
Do you have any?
Just, I saw Mr. But, I'm sorry. Just one comment back, and I've actually done the research. The reason the Little Red, now, nothing to do with tuition, but the reason the Little Red School District taxes are so bloody cheap sits on Jordan Rowe. If their demographic, as far as physical geography, looked like what this district is, it'd be a completely different story. Because I've done the research, the analysis, I know how much taxes buildings or land pay in the tech parks specifically and adjoining properties. And when you actually look at the raw numbers, it is a little mind-boggling that, of how much of, of any of the taxing entities, the fire district, the town itself, the county, comes out of those, whatever, a couple hundred acres, and it's only a fraction developed. So, that, it's an anomaly for a district, any district.
Mary?
I just had a quick letter, just a conference letter. I just wanted to read it, because I get nervous speaking in public, so... I'm writing to the board to express my gratitude and to recognize the hard work of Dr. Mary Otis and Dr. Tom Reardon. Dr. Reardon has done an amazing job changing the culture of the school and enhancing the educational opportunities for our children and teachers.